Yep.
Ready?
We're up, sir.
Twin Town Planning Commission Police come to order. May everyone stand for the pledge of the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect that all commission members are present. Commission member should have received the draft minutes of June the 24th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
No, sir.
If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the minutes from last month.
Is there a second to those?
I'll second.
Bill seconded them. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's the... Carrie, thanks. Delegations and action items. First item is Mountain Brook subdivision seeking concept site plan extension. I believe we gave them that back in August 28th, 2023. So would someone want to start us off on this, Daryl or Jim?
So it was granted concept site plan approval. So we've... So Jay, you want to start off or you just want me to?
Sure. I'd be happy to take this one. Good evening, everyone. I'm taking this because I've been in contact with the developer's attorney over the past couple of months. And as you know, you gave approval for their concept and their next step is to start their preliminary engineering and preliminary plan. But they're having trouble trying to do that because part of their road system needs to match up with the potential connection to Route 140 across the Flowserve property. And so we told them, you know, hold because we don't want to make... We don't want the road in the wrong spot. And the city manager has been working with Flowserve to negotiate a right-of-way for that connection. And we've been doing pretty good. They're interested in doing that for us. They had a bunch of conditions, which of course we're going to pass on to the Mountain Brook developers. And we're just short of putting something in writing to make the right-of-way happen. And so of course, that's positive news because it's been going on for quite a while. But caught up in the middle of that is the time schedule for the extension. And the bottom line is the city really wants this to have an extension for Mountain Brook because we want to make sure that their road system matches up with the potential right-of-way. So the request that you have in front of you is for the one-year extension that's permitted under the code.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
No. It's a, you know, complicated thing because, you know, they have to have that second indenture to get more than 50 houses. So in the long run, it'll be a beneficial item for the city. So I see no reason not to extend this.
So and the study that we... That just finished, that was... That included like the proposed bypass and everything. So all that's like encompassed in that study that's been going on. Okay. Yeah.
That's correct.
Just, yeah.
Jim, do you have?
We had... We contracted with CLSI to do the fieldwork for the deed of easement out there at Flowserve. They did the fieldwork, uh... Let's see. Last week and a little bit over the previous weekend. So we're waiting for them to process that data and turn it into a meets and bounds description and an easement plot. And then we'll present that to Flowserve's corporate folks.
Okay. What's the wishes of the commission?
I'm okay with... I'm in favor of extending.
I'd like to see a motion.
So I'd make a motion that we extend the, uh...
Concept.
Concept plan, uh, approval for one year.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Myers is our second, second by Bill. Any further discussion? Any comments from the county?
Just, I mean, just the only comment is my reason for doing that is only because we need the preliminary plan in order to even make a decision of anything because we haven't really seen anything. So just...
I mean, we're only extending the concept plan at this point in time.
Right. At this point.
Which we already agreed to.
Yep. Thank you.
Number moving parts, yeah.
Anything else? So all those in favor of the motion extending the concept plan for one year signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is William Fishu? Fish? Fishu? Fitzu?
Fitz.
All right.
R-T-Z-H-U-P-A.
All right. All right.
So Bill, if mine speak from the podium, say your name and address when you speak. But Mr. Fitzu is here because he'd like to, um, put a garage on his property. In the documentation that I sent you, there's a photograph three pages before the end of what I sent you. Mr. Fitzu feels that the right way to do would be to attach that garage to his house. But in the R-10,000 zoning, his side setback is minimum of 10 feet. Whereas if he put a shed there, um, he could go five feet with a... So that's here... That's where we're at. So if he's... So he's seeking a variance for the side setback, um, of his left yard from 10 feet to... It'd actually be six feet, eight inches.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, I'll... There'll be about six or seven feet between the structure and the property line. So I'm like two or three feet into the easement.
Okay. Just to clarify, you refer this to a shed. Now, this is an attached garage.
It's a... It's an attached garage.
Okay.
Right.
What you were saying is if we were putting a shed there, he could be closer to the line.
If he put that same building on the ground, it would be...
An inch away from his house.
An inch away from his house. He could... Got it.
And we...
Flexibility with the detached as I do attached, which I think it should be the other way around.
Kind of seems a little odd, but yes.
So we have a few of those around town and I didn't want, you know, share these pictures. I mean, they're out there if you run around and see those. But the picture of his home, you can sort of get an idea if you had a shed sitting there and one attached.
Okay.
I originally was going to consider detached, but I wanted something more aesthetic and architectural likeness to the house. Something nice. But I wanted to be as big as I can get it because once it's up, there is no...
Right.
No making it bigger. But, um, you know, I don't know if you made a... I sent a copy of the front of the plans. It looks like a nice, nice building that the guy's going to build for me, so. So I had to have, uh, you know, a surveyor come out because the original plot I had for the lot only gave me the dimensions of the lot. Didn't tell me what the dimensions were from the house to the property line, nothing like that. So I had to call a surveyor out and have it done the right way. Because I don't want to have to tear it down and once it's... If I didn't do it the right way, I didn't want to have any cease and desist notices on the house or anything.
This property is on a callsack too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Open for discussion?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so what is our task in front of us? Are we making a recommendation?
To the Board of Appeals.
Step is Board of Appeals, right?
Yeah.
And we don't have a date on that yet, do we?
You don't.
Okay.
But Mr. Fitzu has paid for it and sent in all the documentation. It'll go to legal review here after we get done next day or so.
I assume you've talked to your neighbors. Everybody's cool?
Yeah, I've sent them letters.
Okay.
You know, certified, certified.
Certified letters in...
Mm-hmm. Town wills. And, uh...
A technical point, Jim, I'm not sure, or Jay. The map and parcel numbers listed on the... On the application with all the addition property owner, should those not be the adjacent property owners' parcel numbers and not just yours?
I'm sorry?
When you... On the application, it says map and parcel?
Yeah.
You've got your map and parcel number in there. I don't know if that's supposed to be yours or if that's supposed to be each of theirs.
It's there.
All right. Then you need to correct that because there's only... You've got one single parcel number for all five of these.
I got that off the state.
They all have the same... They can't all have the same parcel number, can they?
Well, if... Well, that I don't... I can't answer that, but that's what this...
I got that off the, um...
If it was one site, probably.
They can't... They can, but they should have individual lot numbers.
Okay.
So a lot of times with subdivisions, they are the same parcel number, but then they have individual lot numbers.
All right. It seems strange to me, but you know, more like wire or OBO numbers.
So for BZI, excuse me, Clara will send them out. And I already provided a list for... Because there's actually three more contiguous neighbors.
I'm sorry?
There's actually three more contiguous neighbors. Just the way we look at it, we... If it crosses the line across the street, we send that letter too.
Right.
So Clara will send all those.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, do I have a recommendation?
I mean, I have no issue with this. It's fine with me.
Then let's hear it as a favorable or unfavorable.
I move to provide a favorable recommendation to the BZI regarding Mr. Fitzu's garage.
That was made by Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bradley. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation of the favorable recommendation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carrie, thank you, sir.
Okay. So from my information, I can pass, Chris, the contractor. You may know this, but you say that goes to... What's the next step?
Next step is that document you filled out for the Board of Zoning Appeals. That will be set up in the next couple, three weeks. And then you're know when your hearing date will be.
Okay.
You need to be here to present that.
All right.
All right, sir. Well, thanks for...
Don't need me for anything else?
No, sir.
You're welcome to hang out and...
Yeah. Well, I got a dog that's like...
Well, thanks for working with us, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Next item is Twin Town Police Department, seeking a site plan waiver for an additional storage shed next behind their police station.
So whenever there's a creative site plan need, in this case, a new building, for instance, the shed is 12 feet by 16 feet. It would be less than 12 feet tall. It will have a hip roof. The hip roof will, um, help out with the nicer design. It will be a similar color as the roof that's on the police station. So that'd be nice. Outside of that, it's a shed. It could be moved. It will be on the asphalt parking lot. Either the generator has to be moved or whatever, or replaced. The hip roof, the pergola does not come with it. That's additional. The, um...
Cupola.
Yeah, cupola, rather, I'm sorry. But the hip roof did add $1,500, but it looks nice.
How much?
15.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can use that elsewhere. Okay. Comments, questions, concerns? So that's going to fit right into those parking spots?
That'll spot in a half, yeah.
And that doesn't create any issues about parking? Okay. All right. Understand a motion?
I move that we accept the shed, approve the shed for the Twin Town Police Department.
I think what we're looking for is a waiver for a site plan.
For the waiver of a site plan, yeah.
Okay.
So we waive the site plan for the shed for the Twin Town Police Department.
Is there a second to that? Second by Bill? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Unanimous? Thank you. All right. Ordinance in agreement review. I gather there's none. Daryl, your report.
Okay.
A minute till I get it, please. Okay.
Good. So Chairman, you probably noticed that down here in the, um, in the projects, there's no wording about Ballinger Park. That's been completed and closed out. So that's one for the books.
So I think that's a pat on somebody's back getting it done. I just don't understand how come one of the last things on the projects list is one of the first things taken off? What seems to be the drag for the rest of them?
Well, I mean, Chairman, you know, that's a, um... They're... I inherited the order.
Okay.
So, no. So it's just, yeah. So VAPCO, we hope that, um, some of these days, the, um... Yeah, Recover 180, that's... That's in Storage Today. That really, really is coming down to one scenario. It's got to be worked out with the, um, CDM Smith and the city. That's... People are on vacation right now, so we won't know that answer hopefully for... Hopefully within about a week.
Some of these aren't... Isn't there a deadline that we should be waiting on or should be coming up close?
Concepts the only one that I'm aware of that has the one-year, um, one-year, um...
Deadline?
Yeah, deadline.
And that's because of state, right?
That's our code. Is that they have to submit the preliminary plan within one year of the concept approval, which Storage Today did. So once they've submitted that preliminary plan, as long as they're continuing to work on it, there's really not a deadline on how long they have to get through that process.
Is there, um... Is there anything in the code? And I apologize for not being familiar with it, but is there anything in the code that if it's... Becomes inactive for a period of time, that it has to go back through the process again?
I think one year.
Isn't that one year also?
We've had projects that have withdrawn on occasion. It's kind of rare that something develops a full preliminary plan and then doesn't come to fruition. But there have been a time or two that whatever conditions changed and the developer decided that, you know, the time wasn't right for the project or something like that. But I can't think of an instance where we, um, kicked somebody back to the concept stage when they were in the middle of a preliminary plan. So if you want to have the ability to do that, I think that we would need to set some sort of, like, dormancy period that if, you know, if something's not active, you know, and in the case of the storage place, they've been going back and forth with the engineers over, I think, a sewer line that's at the base of the retaining wall and trying to figure out how to make all that work. So, you know, we know there's been ongoing communication with the project so that it's, you know, work is being done.
Right. Right. In their case, there's an issue.
But if it's just crickets and, you know, nobody's reviewing anything and nobody's responding to the last round of comments, you know, we might want to think about, you know, how long can that condition go on?
Right.
Before it's considered, you know, um...
Yes. Even if somebody doesn't withdraw and if they're just... If it just sits on the shelf for three years and then they come back and say, you know, we'd like to... To, you know, you've granted us a concept and we've submitted our preliminary and... We sat around for three years and didn't do anything. Now we want to go ahead with our project. I'm not sure if...
Generally, folks aren't going to do that because they have money tied up in it. They have money tied up with us with their escrow account. And, you know, for them to get that back, they would basically send a letter saying they're withdrawing the project.
Gotcha.
So...
Well, that's where we got it. We've got them with the escrow fund anyway. So that's 5,000 good reasons to continue going with what you're doing.
Well, that and the, um, the pre-submitting meeting with the county, not cheap. That's enough to make you go, okay, well, we're going to do this. But you're right, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. The city manager, Ybreak, and myself met with Carroll County staff, State Highway Administration to discuss items about, um, navigating the Huffman property if they go through with, you know, some type of plan to develop.
Hey, Daryl. Can you refresh my memory where the Huffman property is?
Huffman property is beside Creekside, between them and Sales Mill, right across from McDonald's. It goes all the way up to Stump Town Road.
Gotcha.
Yes. About 100 acres.
Where Tracy used to live.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's been on the books for what, 25, 30 years?
Was that?
And that's been before...
Been in the city for a very long time.
Yeah, 20... Yeah.
That's why Randy moved, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tear the house down. Yeah. Okay.
All right. So of course, on the 23rd, we had our first meeting with the comp plan, which we'll be talking about a little bit later. Very exciting. I met with Director, Economic Development Director Mishi, and Deputy Director for Economic Development Paige Sunderland to tour the new buildings that Pat Small has purchased down at the old Metcalfe site or Cambridge. So I'm not sure what he's doing there. He has retained a engineer for the project, the storage area. So that's all going to come through to us. Oh. So Twin Town Elementary, that's a county project. There is no subdivision of land. All right. We have three phases. We have concept, preliminary, and final. They're having a hard time and maybe I'm not a great instructor, but they're having a hard time with this three-phase plan. They just presented to me, and I'll get them out maybe this week, with no changes, their preliminary site plan drawings for us on Friday, or maybe it happened today. They're presenting to Carroll County final site plan because they don't have the preliminary. So what they're hoping to do, we've talked, and Jim, catch me if I fall, but I think what we're going to try to do is ask that next month, we take them from preliminary...
What? Concept.
Take them from concept, present to preliminary, and then we need to get them to fin... They want to get the final, um, the school board, that project, to get them to final. So they're going through the process, except referring to us as preliminary, and they're in final.
Can we get them to change their drawing? I think they have on the building site itself, F-something. It has to do with student funding. Can we get them to put the square footage of that building? I mean, all our drawings on buildings, usually we go by square foot, square feet. But they have something to do with student funding account. It's F-F-E-something, whatever it is. But it's on their drawing. So it'd be nice if they could change that before they present it back to us.
Actually, I thought that was a comment on one of the early letters.
Yeah. I thought I made that way back, but I just... Okay.
And last but not least, Commissioner Member Myers asked me to contact an entity at the county for what they review. I've called three times. Haven't gotten a call back. So I don't want to say the entity. They're normally the fastest letter out of the chute. So maybe they're on vacation, but I will keep checking. All right?
Appreciate it.
Yes. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Anything else with our projects and construction phases and stuff? That's...
Um, you know, because it has become an issue in another way, can we formally resolve my issue at Georgia's on your?
Sure.
You know, we... I've gone back and I've looked at the last two years of water use. I'm running between 230 and 240 gallons a day.
Shouldn't that be with the administration, not with this planning commission?
I don't know. I know that we continue to appear on this, and so I don't know where that stands or why we continue to appear here.
So any project that's not closed out by way of PWA, some type of agreement that may have been made between, you know, that this project and the principles. So there's, um... On Georgia's, there's the challenge of do you owe it even or not? So that's not been resolved.
Right. So if that's the only thing outstanding, I'd, you know, I'd like to move that forward one way or another and let's get this resolved because I don't want this to continue to hang over the property. You know, if I get to a point where I may try to convey the property, I don't want to have some sort of issue with the planning commission still hanging over.
Okay. So yes, it's a city matter.
Did Jay... Jay, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I, you know, we're familiar with what's the issues are there. And what it'll need to be is an amendment of the Public Works Agreement. Or at least that's the... That's where the end result would be. And that lies with the city council. So, Mr. Tillman, I'll bring that up under my legal report next month to the city council and say that that is something they need to address.
That's fine. I just want to get it cleared off. I mean, because it's been... I've been on this report for five years and we haven't done anything for five years. So it would be nice to get that, you know, you talk about wanting to clear things off of this report and I'm like, let's get something moving here. So...
All right. Jay, while you're up, you want to handle your comments, your legal updates?
Um, I can... There's... It's very quick. I don't have anything planning related on the burner at this point in time. As we talked about at the workshop that you had, I'll be involved in the master plan to the extent that you need me. If you have any questions, I know there was some written questions, at least in one of our workshops, about like affordable housing and things like that. I know Mr. Myers had raised. And so when we get to those appropriate times, I'll be prepared to come in and talk and give some background and help. So I'll be monitoring that. But as of now, there's nothing pending with the mayor and council that involves planning and zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Jay, I do have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Have you seen the letter from Governor Moore's office about zoning and small houses and that type of thing?
I have not.
Okay. I'm going to send you an email tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thanks, sir.
All right. County, Tiffany?
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. A few updates for the county. The water sewer master plan follow amendments are due August 1st, and the spring amendments for 2024 have been approved. For the housing study, we saw we're... We've completed all public outreach at this phase and moving forward to just collecting data, compiling a draft report that'll be in our hands hopefully in September. We'll be sharing with, here, with the city at that point and asking for input then too. Text amendments that have gone to the Board of County Commissioners, they have voted to prohibit food processing daft residual storage in the county. The BCC voted to refer proposed changes to solar site design requirements to the PZC for discussion and recommendation. And the reason for that is that it is restricted in the county code in agriculturally zoned areas. But there is... There is action that can preempt that that's being taken right now for solar and ag. And so the county is working on getting some bulk requirements and other requirements in place on, if it does come through. And then we... The Board of County Commissioners also voted to direct staff to work with PZC to draft a text amendment to address the Maryland Housing Expansion Act of 2024, which I have... I think I sent information to you regarding. And that is because the state has a housing package that has come through with certain legislation on modular dwellings and bonus densities if there is a certain, like a 25% or a third of it is affordable housing. And then there's a density bonus and that does... That's something that we need to address in the county as well. So that's the governor's package and that was passed this legislative period in 2024. So we're working on getting that into our code if there's anything that we want to change. And then the master plan update, we have... Right now, we're just compiling data and we're putting together things we're calling Topics and Trends Brief Reports. And that includes things on housing, sense of place, economic development, aging infrastructure, and how we use our land. And then we're also looking at how we can get into the community coming up and just trying to get public engagement And then we're also looking at how we can get into the community coming up and just trying to get public engagement that they, you know, know that this is actually happening. Does anyone have any ques, exactly? Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Appears nothing under old business, new business, I guess we're all excited about. So, Darryl?
I just wanted to, you know, I, I think it's wise that we just, I guess, reflect a little bit. I think the more we talk about the comp plan, the better off we are. We have to really, really hammer down. Once we meet again, we discuss the additional questions that Arrow may throw onto that survey. And then think about ways where we can get people to, get that in their hands. So Dan's already on it. He, he, he's, he anticipates very quickly. So we've discussed a little bit of that, and I think the city manager has as well, getting that online to our app or what have you, getting it out there. Maybe, you know, try to do, you know, Tiffany, what you've, what you've done with the housing study, you and your group, it's amazing. I saw it everywhere. I mean, nearly daily did I see the opportunity to do the housing study. So I hope that was, I'm hoping that was as rewarding for you all as, as I think it would be with participation because, you know, it's like anything else, you know, they do what they want to do. All right, that's, that's what we, 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 I'll done it. Not really. It's amazing how one or two people sitting in here can really not sway, but, but guide, yeah. Really, it's amazing when you watch. So outside of that, I guess what I'm anticipating is we're getting more information on what the agenda will be for next month. The rule is by Thursday before, but, you know, as we get down to some of the heavier stuff, the earlier the better. So they may have pre-cooked things that they could share with us earlier is what I'm saying. I'm assuming.
Are we looking at August the 20th to have a meeting or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Every month from here on, here on out, before.
The Tuesday before this meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only homework we have is review the, the two questionnaires that they gave us and be prepared to discuss questions.
Pretty much. If you, if you guys have an idea of something you, you want on there that's not on there, shoot it to me, the earlier the better. So I can get it back down to them.
I'm really just having a hard time understanding the concept of having the special person interview or the questionnaire and then another person. I can't really get through my head why we would want to do that.
Well, you have two, what's the difference between a key person and a regular person in the community?
You're a key person and I'm not, man.
I, I don't know. I, I think you're more key than I am.
I'm just curious. I don't really understand that, that's all.
I would think that they would be pushing maybe some of the people in the businesses, like VAPCO, some of the upper level people in VAPCO.
Well, that's what I think, can we ask that question of, of Craig and his group of who, who do they think the key people are that should have this other survey? What's, what's, what are they driving at?
I'd be perfectly fine with business owner and homeowner or, or, or resident.
I don't think that, that title is the correct title.
Yeah. So, but anyway, something to discuss.
Because one of my notes that I have is like to 15 or 20 people, who, who are those people, you know? Define what you're looking for from, from that. I don't feel like we have a clear definition of who, who, who is supposed to be filling out this particular piece of paper as opposed to this one.
Yeah, to me, it kind of implies that their, their answers are weighted heavier than the other people. So I just.
So I, I think it's people, so over to talks with the different bidders for this project. I think the, the key people would be things, people that have shown interest, that have, have, that are shown interest, have participated, would be my guess. Not, you know, not my son who's 22 and doesn't really think about things the, the way, you know, a young man does, because he doesn't have to right now. I, I don't know. That's, that's a.
That'd be a question I asked him then.
Yeah, we're asking.
Yeah.
Yes.
They, they touched a little bit on that last week, and I think that they were planning to include some, some individuals on, on city staff as well. So I think that there may be some, I'll say, like, subject matter expertise weighing in on certain parts of it also. So, you know, the, say, the Public Works Director may, you know, have some thoughts on like how, how growth and infrastructure are going to tie together and if there might be some better approach or direction. You know, maybe there's part of town that gets gravity flow to the sewer better than other parts of the city. And, you know, not, not that the questions on that get, you know, get into that kind of nitty gritty, but maybe having somebody with, you know, some specific expertise weigh in. You know, we might want to hear thoughts from the police department about growth and, you know, what, what that looks like, you know, for them to be able to manage things as we grow. So I, I think those would be some of those, you know, key people. But otherwise, it might be, right, it might be somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from, you know, some of the larger industries in town. So we, we do have to have those conversations with the folks from Arrow, for sure.
Okay, and I, you know, because that, some of those maybe take personal limitations from someone, you know, from you or, or someone to, to get them to actually fill this out and not go, huh, you know?
Yes, yeah.
So an idea that I had, and I'm not sure if it's apropos or not, just because of, of the, the nature of the event, but, you know, try, we talked about trying to engage the public. You know, the next event that a lot of people will be at would be National Night Out here in, in a few days. I realize we're not really ready with anything yet, but, you know, maybe just a couple of people sitting at a table with a few copies of the comprehensive plan just for, just, just to start a talking point. I mean, I'd be willing to volunteer to do that if, if, if that, if we think that that's, you know, that there's some efficacy to do that.
You could let them know the survey's coming.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Right, just some, just something to start the conversation.
Yeah. I hope we nail down the survey. I hope we, you know, get it really right because that's going to be, I think it's going to be a big part of what they, they are going to be looking at. Because, you know, they meet with us for an hour and a half and they go web, you know, spin their web. So we gotta, you know.
Do we have anything else? Okay, anybody have anything? If not, I guess it looks like August the 20th and then August the 26th.
Yep.
So I'm looking for a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pooz, nay? Unanimous. Thank you.